Bingo Chuck. Alrighty, good morning, person Fair Board members and over to you Chair Harrington.
Thank you Clerk Moss. I'd like to call the annual joint required meeting of the Washington County Board of Commissioners and the Washington County Fair Board to order. Clerk Moss will take the role in just a moment. Thank you Clerk Moss.
Certainly Madam Chair. Alright, start with our Fair Board members. Troy Sobels. Bill Ganger. Gary Seidel. Online Fatine Mahmood. Fatine, can you hear us?
Yeah, I can hear you well.
Perfect, thank you very much. Commissioner Tries.
Here.
Commissioner Willie.
Here.
Vice Chair Fai.
Present.
Chair Harrington.
Here. Commissioner Roy Rogers is excused and we're hoping that a Fair Board member Mitch Nussbaumer will be joining us soon. Clerk Moss, after this meeting, given the posted agenda, if you could include in the meeting packet a link to the fair strategic plan that will take care of our record needs. In addition to the usual that you do. So, welcome everyone. Really appreciate your being here today. And without further ado, we'll turn it over to Fair Board President Gary Seidel.
Chair Harrington, thank you very much. Welcome. I'd like to introduce the board to make sure everybody knows who they are. I'm Gary Seidel. Was the Fire Chief here in 2004 to 2012. But City of Hillsborough came out of Los Angeles as an Assistant Chief. Retired and immediately Leah grabbed me to come up on the board. So I was appointed by the county and I thank you for that for the board, Fair Board. And I've been on, I'm coming on my fourth term. And I've been president for the last six years. And so a little bit about me, the only thing in there that was really recognizable is I had a chance to basically show a grand champion bowl that came out of there. That bowl happened to be from Bill Ganger's chalet realm in here. And so you can see behind me is Bob Rollinger and Bob had a grand champion out of that too. So we are two Fair Board members that hold the grand championship trophy ribbon. And we don't like to talk about that very much.
You let a guy start it.
We hear about it every, every week.
They have to hear about it. So we do that, but in there, but no, that's part of the thing in there is we were able to participate, to be able to assist with the livestock and showing in there. And that was a very good reward. We do thank that. We'll move on to Bill Ganger. Bill is the oldest living or maybe not the oldest living, but he's the oldest member of the Washington County 4H Club. Bill's been on the 4H Club for well over sixty some years in there. And he's been serving the community in there. Bill retired for PGE, Pacific Gang or retired out of PGE and started serving the board. But Bill is also starting his fifth year. As a term member on the board in here too.
Do you mean Pacific or Portland?
It'd be Pacific, yeah. What I call, no, it is Portland.
It's Portland generally.
Yeah, Portland generally.
Forty-five years.
Really?
You found us. Welcome.
The next member of our Fair Board that we're going to talk about is Bob Rollinger. Bob can't be here today, death in the family, and he had to go back. So Bob has been around. He's been with the city council or the Chamber of, Chamber of Commerce here in Hillsborough for a guy well over twenty years. He's a real estate agent. Been in here and he's been on the board for his third term, starting his third term here on the board in here. Bob is also a vital member to be able to assist us too. Next member happens to be Mitch Nussbaumer, who just happened to walk in here. Mitch has also started out as a 4H member, FFA member. And continued in there and now is assisting with kids to be able to carry on that same role in the community. You're on the farm board too, am I correct?
Uh, no, I'm a member of Farm Bureau.
Farm Bureau, okay. Bill, so but vital member in here. Troy came on to start last year and came on to do that. Troy comes out of Intel. Also a valuable 4H member that has been around the community in there, but heavily involved in the Oaks Club. Being the past president in almost every position on the Oaks Club, Troy has come over to be able to service. And Troy, like I said, is just starting in here. The other member that happens to be on Zoom is Fatine Mahmood. And Fatine just came on in January. And engineer, electrical engineer degree in there, also a math teacher, calculus teacher. Does that and a lot of degrees in electrical engineering. And we have Fatine with us, like I said, on Zoom. And so he's the next member in there. The other member you may know, he also goes by the name of Sonny Bonham. Even though Sonny has passed away a long time ago, Jerry's been around to do this, Jones and Roth. And then partnered Jones and Roth and then decided to get in the political realm. There's two terms in the Hillsborough City Council, two terms as mayor of Hillsborough in here and now Washington County District Four and represents the county on our Fair Board staff in here too. The best thing about Jerry is he does have a beautiful wife and a beautiful family.
Yeah, here.
And that, part of the thing, and this was probably about 2012, thirteen, M L U for the Fair Board and for the, the county came together to be able to kind of have a line of delineation on our governance rules to be able to see exactly what's going on. And when it came in to be able to do that, we wanted to make sure that we have those rules set up to assist us. And again, as the county, you do appoint us as Board of Commissioners. We do serve a term of three years at your election and we all thank you for being able to put us on here. We are volunteers, just like most other boards out there. And we're here to be able to do the best we can for the fair, for the community, for the city of Washington County and the City of Hillsborough. And deliver a good education and entertainment program within livestock realm and within science realm to be able to assist the community around here. So we definitely want to do that. You do approve us, you do approve our budget. And you do have an oversight of the whole fair grants. And there, as far as the Fair Board, basically we have the oversight of the fair budget. Maintain the fair strategic plan that we just did last year. And we'll also look at it coming up at the end of next year or this year, we'll look at it doing it. We also establish the policy for the fair and then basically we award contracts to be able to get the right people to make sure we have a good demographic realm to be able to assist anything that's coming with the fair. That's pretty much our role as governance. Just going into Bill, it's Bill's like that, this was Bill's.
Yep.
Today, we're going to talk about the activities of the Fair Board. Last October, Mitch, Troy and I attended the Oregon Fairs Associates Annual Meeting in Redmond. And the board attends this every year. It's a great event. We learned a lot of programs, a lot of activities, other fairs to use and we get ideas for our fair. And we also spend all day doing animal and human disease prevention like E. coli. And it's put on by the International Association of Affairs and Expo and Oregon State University. And other notes of programs are on the fairgrounds, ADA compliance, active shooter and emergency planning.
Okay. And the strategic plan that I did talk about, we started that last October of 2022. We started working on that. We had a facilitator. It was contracted to be able to come in and assist us with our, our plan to be able to do it, come up with a vision, mission, purpose. And the thing that we decided to add was a model. Because Leah's been using the big fair fun, EFF, which has been a big model that we've been using for years. So we wanted realize that we did have a good model. And basically we want to make sure we embrace the heritage of our community as well as future generations to come as our vision. Mission again presented educational entertainment throughout the county to make sure that we meet that realm. And the purpose is to be, be the best fair that we can at Oregon. Make sure it's the safest and healthiest fair that we continue to do. Like we said, our model, big fair fun. As far as community building in there. We want to also make sure that it includes everything that is around this community from livestock to entertainment to science, to education and also the heritage that we have. Biggest thing that we try to do is we make sure it's, it is definitely healthy and it is safety wise. Every fair, we do what we call an event action plan. These are emergency action plans that we put together to make sure that all public safety partners coming in can assist, know what their mission is, know what their role is, should we have an event or occurrence. And come into play that we can make sure we all act responsibly and make sure we take care of the safety of all attendees at the fair as well as the community around us. That's our big thing that comes in on safety in there too. As far as programming, again, we're looking for arts, we're looking for science. We're looking for math, we're looking for robotics, we're looking for anything that we can see in the community that comes in to be able to help. We look at latest trends that are coming in, cultural diversity. Make sure we do that as well as abstracting art. It's going to be relevant in our community and their partnerships. We seek partnerships throughout the community to be able to deliver these programs, deliver this entertainment and deliver the resources that we can at the care and again administratively best practices. We're looking at making sure that, we make sure that we're efficient, we implement efficiencies, we evaluate. We continue to support what's going on. And if we need to revise, we'll revise. Like we said, we do this every two years and we will do a, the end of this year, we will do another look at this, our strategic vision, just where we're going to be moving towards. Recap of last year's fair. This was really first of a full ten year. We tried to revise ten year right after COVID. Or ten day plan, not ten year plan, ten day plan. We got to try it a little bit, but last year we were able to put together the, the first full ten day to be able to see what's going on. And the best thing, the weather did cooperate with this. They only had three days where the weather got above ninety or yeah, into the nineties. And the rest of the days was very satisfactory. I know the year right after COVID, we had to make some time changes to support because it was too hot. When the weather does get real hot in there, we got to make sure we have more aid stations set up and would take care of the public, more water stations. To be able to assist and keep the people hydrated. And we have to make sure that we have more resources to handle any deficiencies that does occur or accidents that do occur. With the ten days in there, we basically had ninety-six hours of full fair. To be able to do it Fridays, Saturdays, Sundays, being full days. The rest of the week, starting usually at five o'clock going up to either ten. And I think we even extended it to midnight. And so keep it in there. Midnight is usually the dead cutoff that we do go to be able to make sure we're in there. We had a hundred and fifty-seven, three hundred and six thousand attendees last year, forty, forty-one food booths. And two hundred and thirty commercial booths, thirty-seven rides. The carnival rides. They've been trying to tailor them to suit our community to be able to make sure it's set up for the ones that our kids really like to be able to attend. Not only the kids, but you're going to see some pictures in there of our sheriffs who are enjoying some of the rides that definitely come in there. And we did that, thirty-four thousand, one hundred and seventy cars parked. A lot of that goes to is we use faith Bible. Assist us as a Christian school here in Hillsborough. They assist us with doing the parking and it's very good partnership that goes there. My two grandkids go there, so I do applaud that. So that's what's going in there. Five hundred and seventy-five animals of all different types in there from small cavies, rabbits. A fowl in there to be able to see what's going up, up to even some of the chalet steers that are are pure white. Those are the cleanest ones because the kids wash them, they're cleanest in there.
That's low on me.
That's one of them in there. So again, what's going in there. Two hundred and four H kids were involved in this, which was exceptional number. Forty-one FFA, picture farmers of America were also involved in this too. And then we had thirty-seven entertainment acts to be able to go around the community. Support them at the fairgrounds to show exactly what we serve. Whether it's in wingspan or whether it's out on the fairgrounds, there was always acts going on to be able to assist us in there. And then all five high schools did assist and provided volunteers to assist with the cleanup. And also making sure that the grounds look very presentable in there. So we have a real good partnership with definitely all school districts here as well as a lot of the other community events to be able to assist what's going on. And they do have some pictures that we're going to show you on different things. Go ahead. And they didn't get hurt.
They get paid for it.
I just want to note on this, this photo, the community really loved.
Yeah.
The kids and that were sliding with them really enjoyed their participation with.
Yeah, they even asked them to do a, keep, keep doing it over and over and over. But yeah, I didn't want to do that because I was there. I got to see that happen.
On the sheriff's office presence there is really not only just important visually, but for community interaction. I took the grandson last year. And a couple of the deputies came over and chatted him up, wondering what was going on and everything else. You really appreciated that. So they do a great job.
It's a great community outreach partnership, yeah, with them.
The food.
You can help us cook breakfast.
And this is the 4H robotics team, one of the 4H robotics teams.
One isn't, do you?
You have to be there six o'clock.
It's later in the slides. Yeah.
Are those the pigs that race? My kids love that. They're racing it.
Those are market pigs. Yeah, those were market pigs. The other pig.
The other ones are the.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, those are, those are too big to race.
Yeah, the race, the racing pigs are an entertainment act.
They are fun.
This Saturday or tomorrow at eight to ten at the fairground. We weigh pigs for the auction tomorrow to get their projects started.
So before we move off of this past year's fair. Through your strategic plan, you talk about the annual planning process of receiving equal consideration for livestock, arts, education, entertainment and heritage. So I'm wondering, we only have the fast facts as presented. How do you go about measuring for the arts? I didn't see a fast fact for the arts per se.
Yeah, we're in the Cloverleaf Building. We have all the awards that go through and the participants that come in. As Fair Board members, we're encouraged to go through that exhibit to be able to watch it, to be able to assist in there. And then there's judges that are assigned to be able to judge those acts to see if we can contribute in there. If we've got school teachers or participants that are assisting the kids, we'd like to bring them in too. And a lot of that comes in out of the 4H through Oregon, Oregon State University. With the extension program we have with them to be able to measure a lot of those effects that come in there. And Alan Taggart is specifically our rep that does that. And he does an exceptional job.
He does.
So I definitely hear your aspirations towards that end, but your strategic plan does use the phraseology, at least as presented in these slides for ensuring all aspects of the fair specifically listed receive equal consideration. So food for thought for measuring this upcoming year's fair and into the future. How you're choosing to measure that, what you intend to measure, and then how you actually measure. And over the course of time, like for example, five years of a strategic plan, how you're actually doing compared to those measures.
We can definitely get to those metrics.
I think for next year, that'll be fine.
Yeah.
And I'm actually going to talk about that.
You've got that? Okay, good. And then the dates of this year, the 2024, again, it starts July nineteenth and it goes through the twenty ninth.
So you've put your reservation in for good, not too hot, not too cold.
Oh, we put it in for it. Oh, it just depends.
No big winds.
We leave it up to Jerry to make sure it works.
So, uh, thank you all. My name is Leah Perkins Segley and I'm the Fair Manager for the Fair Board. And I'm going to give you a little bit of a run through on what we are looking at for the 2024 fair. So like President Seidel said, we are July nineteenth through the twenty eighth though.
Can I, can I ask a question before we move to the next item about the strategic plans? So I'm new and I don't know the, the protocol or the etiquette, how to, to ask, I raise my hand, but, but anyway.
Yeah. So what helps with that is we ask active members in the meeting who are on Zoom to please turn your camera on so that we can see you. Cause otherwise here in the room, we can't see your signal. So, um, okay. Thank you. That helps us. Yes, please go ahead, Director.
Yeah, I have a question about the strategic plan. It's a very nice and very elaborate strategic plan. But I don't see the KPI actually being applied, the key performance indicators. All the action items I recommend and suggest that it should be quantitative. Just as an example, if you say that we are partnering with organizations. Let's say you have to indicate that we plan during this year to have seven partnerships. And then at the end of the year, you present to us what you called here a fast facts. You give out the fast facts after the year already ended, which is good. But we need to map this or link this with the action items that we plan on the, on the, the strategic plan. And then we do a quick analysis and see how much did we achieve in each one of these action plan. Let's say that we plan to have seven partnerships and we did only five partnerships who are short two. And then we go to some analysis, why didn't we achieve that much? It's, it's a, it's a, that way it will be like a very productive strategic plan, just a suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you. Um, so the 2024 marks the twentieth anniversary of the Fair Board making the Washington County Fair a free admission fair. So we're, we're pretty excited about our tagline this year. While we are still big fair fun. We are celebrating twenty years of free, free fair admission and free fair fund. So we're doing a lot of of planning about how we're celebrating that and how we're marketing that to our community. We're doing some. I found the first commercial that we did twenty years ago was a little bit difficult to find. But our first commercial where we debuted twenty, when we debuted the free fair. So we're going to throw back some old commercials and really celebrate twenty years of providing a great community celebration for free. Let's see. So entertainment is free this year like it is every year, but we are also offering some additional free things this year. We're doing one national entertainment concert for free. And I'll talk about that, more about that a little bit later. We also offer free parking on weeknights. We're really talking a lot about all the free things that we do for our community, which really is the cornerstone of the Fair Board's EDI efforts. Ensuring that everyone has equal access and opportunity to take part in this community celebration.
Fatine, did you have a question?
Yeah, yeah, I did. Actually, it was a suggestion, not a question. I did regarding the, regarding the strategic plan and the KPI.
Go ahead.
I, I think he's saying he already asked his guy. Oh, okay.
Yep, sorry. So we misinterpreted your raised hands. So you'll need to lower that so we don't confuse ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Leah. Yes, thank you. So advertising and marketing. So what you were just talking about with KPIs and really doing measuring. We are taking a really hard look at this year. All of our data that we have on the fair from metrics and analysis are from pre-COVID. So this year we are really taking a hard look at all of the things that we're doing that are measurable. So we're really focusing on data and efficiency in our marketing and advertising program and applying that back to our strategic plan. So we can produce those KPIs and those metrics that, you know, we have not. Like, like President Seidel said, last year, the 2023 fair was the first full ten day fair that we had post-COVID. Twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two are still a little bit difficult due to some COVID restrictions. So we're going to really take everything that we do this year from a measurement and data gathering standpoint. We're working with our partners in the media and we're creating a cohesive marketing plan and an updated style guide to ensure our message is consistent and recognizable and measurable across all platforms. And we're putting a real high emphasis on having those measurable, measurable KPIs and metrics to define our baseline for all future marketing and programming for the fair. So more to come on that. So we're really excited. It's probably not very exciting for the public, for us in the office and the staff and the Fair Board, really having this hard data that we can use to, to move forward now that we have a lot more that the fairs can, you know, completely operate, operable post-COVID. So I'm just going to do a couple of quick little, there we go. So a couple of entertainment things that we have for this year. This year we are, we have the I Flip Aerial Stunt Show. We're really excited about this. We've been working with them for a couple of years to get them scheduled and their routing was finally able to work into the Pacific Northwest. This is an amazing act. I hope you all enjoy it when it arrives. Brad's World of Reptiles is joining us again. We are actually putting them in the wingspan. It's with the weather that we normally have where it's really, really hot and it's a hundred and ten degrees and we put them in a tent. It's just too hot for the people and the exhibits. So we're moving them into the wingspan. Which will be a great spot for the animals and also for the people to participate in this exhibit. And the free show that we were talking about earlier, country music legend Neil McCoy will be joining us on July twenty-seventh. This will be a free concert celebrating our twentieth anniversary of our free fair admission. For those of you who are not aware, he is famous for his number one hit songs, Wink and The Shape. We are very excited to have, have him performing for us this year. And then we're bringing back our community movie nights. Last year we tried them for the first time. They were very popular, super fun. We had not done movie nights before and there's a lot of fairs that do that. So we brought that in and we're doing that again this year. The movies that we are offering this year are Kung Fu Panda Four. For those of you with kids, apparently that's a really fun movie. And we're also going to do a throwback movie back to 2004 when our admission was free. The most popular movie in 2004 in July was The Incredibles. So we are bringing back The Incredibles and showing that on one night as well. So we hope that you come out and bring your blanket or your chairs and join us for.
No Matrix, no Matrix.
We also have our open class livestock competitions. We are very excited to welcome back the open class dairy goat and the open class pig gorilla goat show for 2024. In 2023, the national dairy goat show was held during our date, so they were not able to come to our fair. But they are excited to return this year and are, they have so many animals already registered that they are having to add a second judge and a second show ring. So we're, we're very pleased about that. And then the open class pig gorilla goat show was last year in 2019. They were not able to put together a show again until this year. So for those of you that don't know what a pig gorilla goat is, they're, they're really cute and the public loves the pig gorilla goat. So we hope that you come out and see them and thank them for being here since they haven't been here since 2019. Our open class community competitions, culinary arts, creative hobbies, horticulture, those are on display every day during the fair in the wingspan. I just want to note quickly, that's, those are those art competitions and community competitions that, that we really struggled with post-COVID. It was a very vibrant program post-COVID and we're really struggling to get people to enter quilts and jams and jellies and art and things like that. So we're doing a lot of outreach into the community. So if you have any suggestions or if you know people, please encourage them to enter at the fair. We do a very beautiful display, but it's definitely more vibrant, the more people that that are participate. We are also bringing back the Washington County Wine Makers Club are coming back this year as well. So we're excited to have them joining us. And hope to have a great wine makers' display for those people who participate in our community. And online registration for all these competitions begin on May first, on our website. 4H and Future Farmers of America, FFA, will be joining us again. The Fair Board provides these important youth development programs, a place to showcase their educational projects for the public each year. And the Fair Board also provides budgetary stipends to both programs to assist with their costs. Both livestock programs are on site, July twenty-fifth through the twenty-eighth with all their variety of animals, you know, cattle, sheep, goats, horses and small animals. And then all the project displays and educational presentations, 4H is in the Cloverleaf Building. And then all the project displays and educational presentations, 4H is in the Cloverleaf building for their communications and arts and consumer science and all that good stuff. And the FFA has their displays in the wingspan and conference center all 10 days. To note, the 4H displays in the Cloverleaf are only on Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays. They don't, they are not open on Monday, Tuesday, once they're Thursday in the Cloverleaf. But so they have six days where they're open for the public.
So aside from this fair schedule, is the 4H horse show back at the West Side Commons?
So they have declined to return according to Alan Taggart. So the 4H horses will be onsite with a display, but their show is held elsewhere.
Okay. And so if I heard you correctly, the 4H class of showing, you know, different foods and whatnot, that will be at the Cloverleaf, whereas the open class will be at Wingspan.
Correct.
Okay.
Open class and FFA are in Wingspan.
Okay.
Yeah, 4H and FFA used to be in the Cloverleaf together, but the, the great news is 4H has so many exhibits now. And luckily we have the Wingspan where we could move FFA so 4H can have enough space to do all of their displays because they have so many now, which is great. And we have space in the Wingspan and the FFA and the open class are there. All right. Is there any questions before we move along to the proposed budget? All right. So this is the proposed budget that the fair board has approved to be recommended to the budget committee and your board. Let's see. So revenue is estimated at $2,378,301. And that is made up through the TLT allocation, which is determined through the county budget process and is estimated at 707,435 for the next fiscal year. We also get $53,166 each year from the Oregon Lottery Funds. Every fair, county fair in the state gets the exact same amount. And all other revenue is generated by fees that we collect at the fair for things like carnival commission, food and beverage commission, booth space, and parking. There's just a quick snapshot, a breakdown of revenue. 68% of our revenue comes from fees generated during the 10 days of the fair and 30% of the remaining revenue comes from the county via TLT and 2% is state lottery funds. Then we have four categories of expenditures to operate the fair and fulfill the five desired outcomes of the strategic plan. Let's see, sorry. Getting used to wearing glasses off and on. So we've got our expenditures, we have a balanced budget, which is great news. There's not, there's, there's been years where the fair budget has not been a balanced budget. So we're very pleased to have a balanced budget in our budget submission this year. And all the things that we do for community building, which is entertainment, educational, our accessibility, our health and safety, our educational exhibits, sponsorships, and all the administrative staffing and administrative costs are really reflected here in the list for our expenditures. And just as a note, staffing is determined by the county in line, in alignment with HR based upon an analysis, an analysis of the staffing levels that the department needs.
Couple, just Jen, I'm looking for general answers. This is your expenditures. And then the other category, you know, I can see entertainment. What is it about expenses both for the exhibit programs and expense for parking?
We, you know, we want to know what those costs are?
No, I'm just looking for a general description of what those categories of costs might include. General, high level.
Yep, absolutely. So park, the parking line item is, is what it costs for us to operate the parking program. So we generate, you know, revenue and parking, but it's also a very high cost to operate parking. We have to have flaggers to cross people safely across, across the road. We have to have parking directors to park people in slots. We have to have a lot of safety signage and things like that. We have a, a youth group, a school group that helps park that we make a donation to. So it does cost us about $100,000 a year to park. We have to pay for HPD for their parking assistance to keep the road safe. It's a pretty expensive program. So that's kind of just high level. And then our exhibit programs, open class is, is really the highest part of the open class is the premiums that we pay out. Premiums is prize money. So for example, we usually pay out about $30,000, $40,000 in prize money. I keep saying premium because those of us in the, in that world know it is premium money, but it's prize money. And then we pay for the judges, which are actually fairly low cost. And then we provide a stipend to 4H, but then also we have a lot of support that we have to provide. We have to rent a lot of tents to, you know, we don't have a lot of buildings at the fairgrounds that can support those programs. So we rent a lot of tents, a lot of seating. We give them a stipend. There's, there's a lot of expenses that go to put on those programs. Tents are very, very expensive.
That's one of the reasons why I asked.
I appreciate that. I, it's, it's a, it's a very high cost.
Why would that be under other versus under materials and services?
Because it goes, because the open class 4H and FFA line items are under other. For what, for what reason, I don't know from the, that was determined by finance long before me that those.
So it's for that specific use.
Yes, yes. Yeah. So we break everything out into a specific use. And actually, we're going to get a little bit more granular this next year with that data that we're talking about. Like right now, we put all of our cleaning supplies into, into just general supplies, but we really want to get more data. Like what exactly does it cost us for sanitation? So we're going to, we've added some line items to, to help us with really understanding what those costs are more.
And I assume that President Seidel, you're mentioning that your grandchildren go to the school that is the volunteer group used for parking, that you've done all that proper documentation for your statement of economic interests and no conflict of interest.
I haven't because I just found out it this year, but if I need to do that, I'll do that.
We'll make sure that happens. I just. And just a quick snapshot, I really like these pie charts. It just gives us a very clean look at, about what our costs are. A lot of people talk about, you know, what our administrative costs are. When you really look at it, it's 3% of our costs. So money well spent to make sure that we have everything that we need to put on a great fair for the community. And then just, I think we hear a lot about this just in everyday life about things that are trending higher from an expense standpoint. So I threw this together just really quickly, you know, where our costs are coming in higher. You know, 7% for supplies, which is fuel, janitorial, you know, sanitation supplies, signage, professional services, security, safety, restrooms, up 6%. We all know that utilities are, are going up. Our utility's up about 18%. Equipment, 8%. We are spending a little bit more in advertising. So not that those costs are trending higher for any reason like inflation, but we are trying to get back up to where prior to COVID, we spent about $100,000 in advertising and we're trying to build that program back up. So we are, that's what that reflection is of 33% is bringing it back up to $100,000 advertising budget. Professional development, we have new fair board members and we are, and we also have a lot of new staff. For those of you that don't know, we had a lot of our staff, long-term staff retire last year. So we have a lot of great new staff at the fair and we've got new fair board members and getting the professional development training about fairs and the fair industry. So we're going to spend a little bit more money on professional development than we normally do. And then open class with the return of some open class goat shows, it's going to cost us about 68% more, which is probably a great value considering what a great show they put out for the public.
All right. Fatine, did you have a question?
Yeah, I just suggesting that if you can put like an X percent of the total budget for a risk or unexpected, because it's very hard to match exactly 2.3 million revenue versus 2.3 million for the expenditure. So I, I suggest if you put like, I'm not in finance, by the way, if this is acceptable to put like a, a risk of that much percentage in case that you have unexpected or something that can be added to the expenditure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Fatine, I think Commissioner Willie will join you in being a detailed budget person. So thank you much for your attention.
And that is all for my presentation for the 2020-2024 fair. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer any.
We also have some places where we'd love the board of commissioners to join us. And at the fair, the first one being May 11th, and it's going to be 7:00 AM to 10:00 AM. And that is at Wingspan and that'll be the sheep and goat weigh-in.
It's actually outside of Wingspan, but yeah.
Okay. Yeah, well, yeah, you're right.
Well, actually this.
Tomorrow, yeah.
It's the pig of the Saturday.
Saturdays, the pigs.
Yeah. Same time? Yes.
Same time. And then on, during the fair, 4H and FFA Youth, we provide breakfast for all 4H, all FFA Youth there as well as the adults. Used to charge the adults, but that got to be a pain. Since they're, they are working with their kids, everybody eats for free.
Can I, could I, being an old 4H'er with rabbits, that morning breakfast is amazing. The leadership program that is brought in by OSU, Alan Taggart, I was blown away because I've been in a lot of leadership programs, but 4H and FFA not only show their animals, but they're being taught how to be leaders. It was awesome.
And it's, it's remarkable. We get roughly over 200 to 300 attendees for breakfast. We do it all Friday, Saturday, and Sunday.
Thursday, Friday.
Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. That's right. And so we do it, it starts at 7 o'clock, we'll start serving. So if you would like to come and assist, I'll guarantee I'm usually the first one there and I'm there at 6:00 in the morning just to be able to make sure we're set up. Come on and join us. We'd love to have you to be able to assist. And then the final day of the fair, we have the 4H and FFA livestock auction. That's on the 17th and that is at 6:00 PM. And so that'll be the final, final auction day on July 27th.
Sorry.
No, I was going to say, as fair board members, it's our honor to be able to serve you and our honor to be appointed in these positions. Like we said, it's all volunteer. But you can see there's a wealth of knowledge that is on the board to be able to assist and make sure that we deliver an exceptional program.
Thank you, President Seidel. Commissioners, do you have any questions? I don't think so. Thank you. Thank you very much for serving the community. This is a great event. It is called a fair. It does offer a great carnival, but it also has a lot of other features that community members appreciate. So I don't, what, one of the things we haven't heard about is beyond attendance, how you measure community interest in seeing items at the fair. So that might be something to consider in years. I'm not. We're doing next year, but out into the future.
We are going to run a survey program this year. We are working with Pacific University's marketing department and those kids are going to come out and do surveying on the grounds. So we can get some more information about when people get there, what are they doing?
Yeah. So that's the pool of people who've already self-identified themselves to go to the fair as opposed to the wider community, which is what I was getting at, the total available market. So.
Yeah, we have the steak feed again this year?
Yes, yes. Saturday, the 27th.
Before the auction.
And who puts it on?
The Livestock Association.
That's great.
Yes.
And you'd expect the steaks to be good and they are.
We improved on the steaks last year.
I do some cooked steaks.
Yep.
Yes.
Yeah. They have barbecue right there. I took my grandson to that too. He liked that steak.
Oh, I miss it.
Yeah, it's great. It starts at 4:00 on the 27th. They put on an excellent steak.
Oh.
Do it in the open area, right by the Dairy Wise booth, the open.
Dairy Women.
And you'll see the Dairy Women booth for ice cream is right next to it. And then go get ice cream.
I think that's it from us. Thank you very much for joining us here at the Washington County Public Services Building for this annual meeting. Well, see you at the fair and enjoy things. Thank you very much. And we're hereby adjourned.